The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice is properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on Tuesday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Council members, Briggs Jones.
Present.
Cherry.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
McCray.
Present.
Wyatt.
Present.
Vice President Sesams.
Present.
Council President Hocken Day.
Present.
All members present in court.
Okay, thank you. Can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting, September eighth?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the meeting minutes have been approved. First, moving to discussion items, we have, uh, want to discuss the watershed improvement plan for Green Brook and Cedar Brook. Who's taking that? Director, the floor is yours.
Yes, uh, good evening, Council President of the Council, I'm the lady at, in the public, this is regarding the watershed improvement plan, in addition to the, uh, stormwater visual mapping. Do you have your right?
We have Penone Engineering here give us some presentation regarding everything we need to do. This is all mandatory by the NJDEP we're talking about, it has to be done by January of twenty-sixth. So I'm gonna have someone from Penone come give a presentation on everything being done with as relates to digital mapping and the watershed improvement plan.
Come forward. All right. Come forward, the floor is yours.
Awesome. Can everyone hear me? Good evening, my name is Chris Perone, uh, I'm in the Engineering Department of Penone Associates, and we're here to talk about the MS four Tier A permit, which includes the watershed improvement plan. Uh, and if you have a packet, it's all the slides if you want to follow along. So this is our first public information session, we're required to have this semi-annually, so this will be something that continues throughout the year and throughout till twenty-twenty-seven. If people have questions or things want to move on, you know, we can talk about this at other meetings. So, next slide. So why are we preparing a watershed improvement plan? Well, in short, uh, it's required for all municipalities in New Jersey. All municipalities are now considered Tier A. Uh, it used to be in twenty-seventeen that only a large majority of the municipalities were Tier A, um, but due to, you know, regulation increase, all municipalities have been upgraded to Tier A. So they all have to, they all have to file with these requirements. So we're gonna talk about what the requirements are and how we're gonna execute this plan. Next slide. So this started way back in nineteen seventy-two with the Clean Water Act. Uh, the idea of the Clean Water Act was to improve and maintain clean watershed areas throughout the state and throughout the country. Um, as you can see, uh, they've updated the plans regularly, uh, and the last timeline there is twenty-twenty-three, which is the start of this MS four Tier A permit that I'm gonna be talking about today. Um, so this Tier A started in twenty-twenty-three, and its first requirement is the mapping, which is required at the end of this year or the start of twenty-twenty-six. Next slide, please. So what's the problem? So ninety percent of New Jersey's waterways are considered impaired, which is very, very high, and sixty percent is attributed to pollutants in stormwater runoff. Um, and as we also know that a lot of severe storms are causing increasingly frequent flooding, something else that we would like to address for this permit. Next slide. And like we said before, all municipalities in the state of New Jersey are required to do this, so we're just being compliant with the whole state. Next slide. So what's a watershed? So we're talking about the watershed improvement plan, the first step is knowing what the watershed is. So watershed, in short, it's an area of land their rainwater will hit, and that all the, all the water will congregate into one point, usually in a stream like the Green Brook or the Ash Brook or other streams in the area. So that's just an area that drains to a certain point. So that's the first part. Next slide. How are we gonna execute this plan? Well, it all starts with data collection. Uh, if you may have seen a lot of people in your town walking around in reflective vests, opening manholes, and inspecting outfalls, uh, throughout the town, that's us getting a inventory of all of the stormwater infrastructure within Plainfield, that's step one. We have to create that map, and we have to know where everything is and where everything goes. The second part is actually creating the map. So once we have all of our points, we have to create a map that displays basically all of the infrastructure throughout Plainfield. And then, at the end of this year, when the map is finished, we begin the data analysis phase, which essentially is the plan being come up with based on what we find in the field. Next slide. So we've opened a lot of stormwater manholes, which are all over the streets, we've looked at outfalls, which are basically discharged to the streams, and we've analyzed the streams as well. Next slide. So what does the map look like? So you can see a picture of Plainfield in red there, and a lot of dots, and those dots represent one of the stormwater infrastructure, which are inlets, which is just those grates on the sides of the roads, on the curbs, that accept water from the street. So that's one element of the features that we're looking at, so that's just one small part of everything. Next slide. What stormwater features do we need to get? There's a lot. In short, there are one, two, three, four, there's like ten different things that need to be gathered here. Outfalls are what drain to the streams, there's forty-six in Plainfield, we have discharge points, interconnections, inlets, manholes, and we have to know where everything goes, which is the conveyance, pump stations, facilities, other maintenance operations. So we have to get all of this information into one map. Next slide. Not only do we have to know the locations of all of these features, but we have to know certain attributes about them. There's a ton of things that need to be known about every single attribute, and this is all put into the map, and this is all used for the data analysis. Next slide. So what's the goal of all this? The goal is to obviously reduce pollution. Pollution is a big problem, as I said, ninety percent of waterways are impaired in the state of New Jersey, uh, and our goal is to reduce that to the best of our ability. Um, that starts with lowering the total maximum daily loads, which is part of the Clean Water Act of nineteen seventy-two, which basically classifies certain pollutants that we are specifically targeting. In addition, we're looking to improve water quality from waters listed as impaired, which is a different form of pollution, and lastly, obviously, if we can reduce flooding during the course of this permit, we would like to do that as well. Next slide. So this is a map of Plainfield, and we have the total maximum daily loads, which is different categories of pollution. You can see a lot of purple there, total suspended solids, fecal coliform over on the northeastern side of Plainfield, and you can see that the stream is highlighted in blue, and you can see that we have impaired waterways, uh, that are noted in blue. Some of it is overlapping with the northwestern line of Plainfield, that's the Green Brook, it's also blue, it's hard to see, it's bordering with the, the town border. Next slide. And here we have different watersheds. So I mentioned that we're looking at improving the watersheds, there are six watersheds that surround Plainfield, so they all have their own areas that drain, so you can see that each polygon there has its own watershed that's associated with different impairments. You can see in the chart, there's different TMDLs and different impairments for each of them, we have to look at all of them. Next slide. So what's the map gonna be used for? So the map is gonna be used to understand the conveyance, where water goes, where the pollution is coming from, and how we're gonna address it, in short. Next slide. Now, we have the watershed improvement plan, and there's a few phases for it. Obviously, the first phase, which is gonna be completed by the end of this year, is the mapping. We've been in the town, we've been looking at mapping all of the locations and grabbing all of the attributes, and all of that is step one, and the goal is, we have to finish it by the end of the year, which we're on track for. Over the course of next year, we have to figure out what exactly we're gonna do to fix it, so that's up until twenty-twenty-seven. And then, by December of twenty-twenty-seven, that plan will be finalized, and we will be, begin executing that plan. Next slide. So here's just a timeline of that, in short, twenty-twenty-six is the mapping, next slide, twenty-twenty-seven is the actual plan, uh, and it's coming up with the plan and figuring out what exactly we're gonna do to address all of the concerns for all of the watersheds in that year. And then the last slide is finalizing, coming up with the final plan that's gonna be executed and submitted as the permit requirement for Plainfield, and then that will be wrapped up nicely for all legal purposes and, um, being compliant with the NJDEP. Next slide. And like I said, we have these public information sessions semi-annually to keep the municipality involved throughout and so that they know what's going on. It's also part of the permit to update the city's website so that they have access to all of the information that we are gathering, and then they can comment and have, you know, input, because obviously it's your town, you want to know what's going on. Um, so that's it. Next slide. Do we have any questions for the MS four permit or the watershed improvement plan? Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Before you, before you sit down.
Yep.
You mentioned, uh, in passing that this plan could help with flooding. Uh, can you talk about that as a benefit to this entire plan?
Yeah, so part of the mapping is understanding where everything is. So, for instance, if there's a certain part of town that has more flooding than others, that can be looked at, uh, on the map and say, okay, if we have flooding in X part of town, and there's a certain number of inlets that accept water in that area, we might find that, hey, we need to increase, uh, the capacity in that area, or, um, you know, figure out why the water is being backed up and filling up that portion of town. Um, that's one of the things, maintenance is a big part of flooding as well. So not only did we capture where those manholes are, but those manholes can also be inspected to say, hey, we have too much debris or other, um, things backing up the system, um, that could be, you know, used to address flooding as well. Um, but basically, once you know what's underground, which is a big part of, you know, flooding in general, then you can address concerns with, hey, we don't have enough capacity in a certain area, and here's why.
Okay. Any other council members have questions?
Council President?
Sure.
Uh, yeah, so, in your experience, have you dealt with the municipality, say, we in Plainfield, we have many flood zones here, and that flood insurance is very expensive for our residents. So has there been cases where you were able to redirect the water? Because I know that you said you gathered the information and say, okay, this is the inlet on the other side of that, has there ever been an experience where you said, okay, we redirected it, this is no longer a flood zone in this area?
Personally, I haven't. Um, we have members of our team that have done that before, yeah. A lot of it, uh, in particular, has been, uh, either maintenance, or we find that there's so much area that drains to a certain, uh, pipe, and that pipe could be upscale, upscaled to a larger size, things that would have to be planned out for construction. Um, that's usually how things go, unfortunately, but you at least get to find out why, what's causing the problem, and then you can address it later, or you can address it with grants or the permit, you know, things like that.
Okay, just one more question. Will the, um, after you finish the mapping, will the city have it in GIS form?
Yes, it's requirement to submit it to the NJDEP, it can also be sent to the city. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? When was the last time a study like this was done in Plainfield?
Do you know, Derek? Uh, that's something we can get back to you on.
Been a long time?
Probably, yeah.
All right, thank you for your report.
Awesome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing else from the administration. Uh, so we will move to consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage. Uh, we have ordinances, Bond twelve eighty-five through Bond twelve eighty-eight, and MC twenty twenty-five thirty-four through MC twenty twenty-five thirty-seven, which are scheduled for public hearing and final passage for the regular meeting as advertised. Uh, we now move on to resolutions. Uh, first with the legislative body items, R three sixty to R three sixty-six dash twenty-five, do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those shall be added. Uh, would the business administrator present the BA items?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Uh, we have three items for consideration this evening. The first is, uh, recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month this month. The second one is advice and consent for an appointment to the planning board. This is an alternate, um, an alternate position, and it's been vacant for some time. And finally, we have a resolution in support of the city to submit a grant to DCA, Department of the, uh, recreational opportunities for individuals with disabilities. This is a grant for integrated recreation for people with disabilities, and we plan to use it for inclusive aquatics programs for families who have a member with a disability, um, family bowling league for families that have a child with a disability, and a canoe trip. So, those are our three items.
Okay, questions from council members? Hearing none, do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
So moved.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those should be added. Okay, next, the Department of Finance, floor is yours.
Good afternoon, all. I have five items, five resolutions for your approval and authorization. First one, R three seventy dash twenty-five, um, is resolution authorizing approval to amend the budget by inserting seven items of revenue and appropriation. And these items are bulletproof vests for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five drive sober or get pulled over for seven thousand dollars, twenty-twenty-six WIC, twenty-twenty-six pedestrian safety grant, um, twenty-twenty-five infrastructure and municipal aid grant, and Sears Consumer Protection and Education Fund Grant, which is very similar to the twenty-five thousand that was added at the meeting last month. Second item is three seventy-one dash twenty-five, resolution authorizing the approval to cancel taxes twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six, totaling nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and sixty-one cents. This is for a deed that was filed in error. This property is tax exempt, it's, um, the Toddler's Learning Center on East Front Street, and this was filed in error and is now, has now been corrected. Resolution number three seventy-two dash twenty-five, resolution authorizing tax refunds on properties per the task schedule. This is for duplicate payments and overpayments. And then, resolution three seventy-three dash twenty-five, resolution authorizing the city of Plainfield to conduct an electronic tax sale. We have been doing this for the last two years, and this provides the city with a greater pool of potential lean buyers. And resolution three seventy-four dash twenty-five, it's resolution authorizing the approval to cancel taxes in the amount of one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents. This is due to a hundred percent disabled veteran. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Okay, do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those shall be added. Okay, the Department of Public Works Director, floor is yours.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Council President, members of council. Uh, Department of Public Works has four resolutions to present. Resolution R three seven five two five, authorizing approval of the city of Plainfield to accept the grant funding, stormwater management study provided by New Jersey's to the technology. Uh, and I just want to commend, uh, our OEM coordinator, Ms. Pathia, for helping get this, this grant funding. This is gonna be something that's gonna help out the city of Plainfield quite a bit in terms of cameras that are installed across the city to look at flooding, flooding areas. So it's, it's a big thing for us, and there's no cost to the city of Plainfield. Uh, resolution three seven six two five, authorizing the city of Plainfield to accept an application in amount of one million five hundred thousand, uh, from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. At this point, we will go for detention bation at Mill Campbell, assistance for that. Uh, resolution three seven seven two five, authorizing change order two to vest on two prize in amount one hundred forty-nine thousand and fifty dollars. This is for extra work that had to be done over at the splash park. Uh, resolution three seven eight two five, authorizing approval of the Morris County Co-op for milliapaven of Summer Avenue and Philbrook Avenue, in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. You have any questions?
Any questions from council members?
President, I have a question.
Go right ahead. Councilwoman Cherry?
R three seven five dash twenty-five, you talked about monitoring, could you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so this, this NJIT, they have a binary to engineers and students that go out, they're putting cameras on poles in various areas, it's like, where is the city that they have cameras on poles, areas that are considered online areas and flooding areas, to the impact of what goes on there, to see what damage can be done, to see what accident can be taken to help those areas. And that's what this, these cameras will do. They're just gonna get a video of everything's going on, we get heavy rain and whatever it is, and flooding, to see what areas look like, so we can see if there is need more attention. And, and this is at no cost to the city of Plainfield.
Is there like a measurement that the cam?
Yeah, the cameras will see what's out, what is out there, how much water is out there period, to tell us how much flooding is there, so we can get at areas as a trouble there, to see how we can try to address it.
Okay, thank you. For R three seven six dash twenty-five, what is the total cost of the project for Mill Campbell?
Well, when we did everything, what the assessment we had came back four million dollars to do things that we want to do.
Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Council President. Director, as a follow-up to Councilwoman Cherry's question, can you talk a little bit, how will those cameras be activated? Are they, um, you know, will they know when it's raining? Like, how will they be activated, and who will be monitoring them? Will they be monitored twenty-four-seven? Is there a turn-on, turn-off switch, and how will that information be shared with the city? Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Well, the cameras, the cameras that are up there, I, I think, uh, that's controlled through NJIT, how they go about doing that, the monitor, what's going on when flooding is coming, how way it was, a major storm is coming, uh, everything will just, will come on, uh, based on from their controls. They would control that, and I can follow up on all that for you.
Thank you, because I'm interested in how that information would be shared back to us, because we would need to be considering, you know, what we would be, how we would be responding as a city.
For the recognition, our OEM coordinator will definitely make sure that information is given to everyone and monitored, uh, when something happens, because the video will be there so we can see all the after effects after the storm, or if an amount of rain that we get. And knock on wood, we didn't get much to share, there would have been a good test this past weekend, but however, we didn't get hit, which is a great thing. Uh, we could have really sold with the, uh, provided on the cameras by, uh, NJIT.
And if I may add, Counselor, as was indicated, these cameras will be monitored by NJIT. Information will be shared with our OEM coordinator, the Office of Emergency Management.
Go, go right ahead, Councilman Graham.
So once we, um, get a report that, say, there's, there are blocks in our town that typically flood more than others, uh, what would be the plan of execution? Would it just be just to block off the, uh, to, to, to prevent traffic from going down the block? Or what's, what's the solution, um, once we have that information to, you know, not allow there to be flooding on the block anymore?
Well, that would help us to respond in real time, based on us having the camera and information on the cameras, we can respond and be there, and take the appropriate action once the water recedes, to see how we can address everything over there. Because what this is doing through NJIT is something for flood mitigation, to help us find additional funding to offset everything, to help cost and improve everything in each area. And that's what will happen with that. So those cameras will show us in real time everything that's going on, so we know that, we can make sure that, we can make sure that area is blocked off, keep, uh, going into it, so, it would help us that way, so.
So it isn't like they do anything to the road, it's just, we just block off the road?
Well, you block it off, right, but the goal, and over time, to find the flood mitigation fund.
So we can get at areas as a trouble area to see how we can try to address it.
Okay, thank you. For R 376 dash 25, what is the total cost of the project for Mill Campbell?
Well, when we did everything, what the assessment we had came back $4 million to do things that we want to do to address it.
Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Yes, thank you Council President. Director, as a follow-up to Councilwoman Cherry's question, can you talk a little bit? How will those cameras be activated? Are they, you know, will they know when it's raining? Like, how will they be activated? And who will be monitoring them? Will they be monitored 24/7? Is there a turn-on, turn-off switch? And how will that information be shared with the city? Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Well, the cameras, the cameras that are up there, I think that's controlled through NJIT, how they go about doing that, to monitor what's going on when flooding is coming, how way a major storm is coming. Everything will just, will come on based on from their controls. They would control that. And I can follow up on all that for you.
Thank you. Because I'm interested in how that information would be shared back to us, because we would need to be considering, you know, what we would be, how we would be responding as a city.
For the recognition, our OEM coordinator will definitely make sure that information is given to everyone and monitored when something happens, because the video will be there so we can see all the after effects after the storm, or if the amount of rain that we get. And knock on wood, we didn't get much to share. There would have been a good test this past weekend, but however, we didn't get hit, which was a great thing. We could have really sold with the, provided on the cameras by NJIT.
And if I may add, Counselor, as was indicated, these cameras will be monitored by NJIT. Information will be shared with our OEM coordinator, the Office of Emergency Management.
Follow-up. Go right ahead, Councilman Graham.
So once we get a report that, say, there are blocks in our town that typically flood more than others, what would be the plan of execution? Would it just be just to block off the, to prevent traffic from going down the block? Or what's, what's the solution, once we have that information, to, you know, not allow there to be flooding on the block anymore?
Well, that would help us to respond in real time, based on us having the camera and information on the cameras, we can respond and be there and take the appropriate action once the water recedes, see how we can address everything over there. Because what this is doing through NJIT is something for flood mitigation, to help us find additional funding to offset everything, to help course and improve everything in each area. And that's what will happen with that. So those cameras will show us in real time everything that's going on, so we know that we can make sure that, we can make sure that area is blocked off, keep going into it. So it would help us that way, so.
So it isn't like they do anything to the road, it's just, we just block off the road?
Well, you block it off, right, but you go over time to find the flood mitigation funds to offset, to repair those basins, everything else, see what we can do to help reduce the amount of flooding in the area.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Will there, will there be any collaboration with Pononi, NJIT and Pononi? Because the presentation we just heard, it sounds similar.
And everything we do will be, everyone will work together on everything that we do, collaboration. But everything with NJIT, you know, is free of charge, everything we're doing. What Pononi is doing is just to make sure that we do. The watershed, you know, storm drains, everything, all the preventive measures are being taken, because that's what NJDEP wants done. So we have to make sure we provide major maintenance on all ends. That's what the purpose of that is for that. This right here would just give us total flood mitigation assistance.
Okay, and I also know NJIT, they have a program where they make rain gardens in cities, so can we inquire about that and see if they can add that as well?
We're looking to everything, whatever we can do to help out, see.
Okay, do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
So moved.
Yes. Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, these items will be added to the voting meeting and to the consent agenda like the previous items. All right, the Department of Economic Development, floor is now yours.
Good evening, Council. I have items 379 dash 25 through 389 dash 25 to name. So the first resolution is to apply and accept a grant for not to exceed the amount of $2 million. This is for the Center of Excellence to continue our professional services as well as through construction. The next resolution is also a grant. It's the PACE Grant, which stands for Pre-Aprentice in Career Education. This is a grant that would support our efforts with workforce development. It's from the Department of Labor. It would be to apply and accept a grant for $3 million. This would support the advancement of the Workforce Development Center that's over at the old South Second Street Youth Center, looking into career training as well as the construction of the building, as well as developing the program itself. The next one is also to apply and accept a grant. This is the greening of Union County. This is a grant that we apply for every year. It is a 50% match grant, where you get $15,000 from the county, and the city matches it with another $15,000. This enables us to purchase an additional 75 trees to plant throughout the city. The next resolution is to return to escrow. This is for a property where they no longer needed to pursue an application grant through the zoning board. The next resolution is related to 335 to 345 East Front Street. This is a request for authorization to pursue a redevelopment study. This would be a non-condemnation redevelopment study for a property that's located where the old Bank of America across from the senior center. The next resolution is to designate 229 to 231 Prescott Place as an area in need of redevelopment. And should you authorize it, we would move forward with the redevelopment plan. This was an area that was originally brought to us by a resident that was interested in a small home ownership lot to develop the lot for affordable homes for themselves. The next resolution is a condemnation redevelopment study for five properties. These particular properties are all on the vacant and abandoned list. They have several tax liens against them and several crime incidences that have, in some cases, the highest is in up to 800 crime incidents. The next resolution, which is 386 dash 25, I am requesting to pull from the agenda, 386 dash 25, please pull it from the agenda. The next resolution is looking for, next two resolutions are looking for support for 1355 Plainfield Avenue LLC. This is the location of the old Mack Truck building. If you recall, we already have cannabis cultivation and manufacturing in this building. What we're looking to do here, this was originally approved for cannabis cultivation and manufacturing all for one particular vendor for 132,000 square feet. That vendor is looking to subdivide off a little over 41,000 square feet to continue cultivation and manufacturing. It will not take up any additional space. It will be an existing approved 132,000 square feet, but it does mean an additional 1.1 million a year in revenue to the city based on our 2% ordinance. The next resolution is a second amendment to a property that's located over the City Village property. This City Village property, this is an amendment that, for a project that has already been approved, but their financial institution requires additional language to be included in their redevelopment agreement, and this is to add that language that is needed. Any questions?
Questions from council members?
Yes, for 381 dash 25, just want to verify that it's the Shade Tree Commission that determines where the trees are planted, when we get the trees?
Sure. It's a combination of the Shade Tree Commission, but residents can also request trees.
Okay, and how, do they go through the Shade Tree Commission?
So the request is made to the Shade Tree Commission Secretary. We have a certain period where we take requests, and they go in the order of availability.
Okay, and for 383 dash 25, this investigation is just to determine the property's best use?
Yes.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Thank you, Council President. With regards to 387 dash 25 and 388 dash 25, can you talk about what, what has been the revenue that the city has collected from the existing business that's there? Because you mentioned that if we allowed them to subdivide, there'd be an additional 1.5 mil, if I heard that correctly?
1.1 mil, yes.
1.1 mil, so what have we collected from them thus far?
So they're get a little over a million. They've been open for about a year. So in total, from that location, it'll stand up to be an additional 2 million. They've actually got 1.5 million a year.
With regards to 385 dash 25, the abandoned and vacant properties, are all of them abandoned? Are any of them city-owned?
None of these properties are city-owned. Currently, these are vacant and abandoned properties by private property owners.
Thank you.
Follow-up questions?
No questions.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Yes, Council, for R 385 dash 25, you talked about 800 crime instances. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. For the address that's located at 101 to 103 West Seventh Street, this is the property that's at the corner of West Seventh and Park Avenue. It's a total of 842 incidents of crimes. Some of them have been assaults, several have involved unhoused populations, there have been over 200 disputes, there have been thefts and larceny as well, and also assisted medical calls.
Thank you. Thank you, Police Director. For 387 dash 25, what was the total amount that we were collecting at 2% from the original?
The 2%, the total amount is 1.1 million from the 2%, from the two new cultivation and manufacturing.
So the 1.1 million in addition to that, what's the original amount?
The, for the property that's currently there, the property that's currently there is 1.5 million.
1.5, so now this is going to be an additional 1.1 million?
3.6.
Okay. And then for 380 dash 25, how will the city disperse these funds for the 3 million? Is this reimbursement? How does that look? This is three contractors.
Oh, so this is for the PACE Grant, did I hear you correctly?
Correct.
For the PACE Grant, this particular one is going to apply with one of the contractors, particularly with Saint Kofa, because this requires to be a US DOL certified apprenticeship program first before you can get a pre-apprenticeship program. So how that would be dispersed is that the city would act as the fiscal agent for the $3 million and basically account for how it's going towards the workforce development, particularly for the construction, because it is our property that they're doing the construction, as well in the program development for the pre-apprenticeship program.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it.
Any other council members whisper?
Yes, I have a question, just a quick question. First of all, I'm very glad that at least one of the properties I know about, the 636 West Fourth, that's about seven houses from me, so I know what's going on. I've been reporting a lot of things there. And thank you, Director Abney. The force has really been with me on that property, so thank you for that, because there are unhoused people in there also as well, and they were moving back and forth, and, you know, and I make sure I let them know, I say, hey. So thank you for that. Just a quick question also on R 388 dash 25. You were saying it was subdivided, subdivided with who?
The original cannabis vendor. So there's Clay Nine that was originally approved there. So there's a license already approved there.
Okay, all right, I didn't know if it was someone from the outside, what I wanted to know, because you're going to subdivide, I wanted like, is it somebody coming in new or someone that already exists? That's why I asked that question. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, Council President, one question.
Sure.
385 dash 25, was that Block 556, Lot 29? That's the rescue squad, correct? 700 dash 10, West Seventh Street?
Yes, it is.
So the funds that we receive from the county, is it attached to that property, or can we allocate those funds for another project?
I believe in the last council meeting, the BA reported that those funds were going to be used for the alarm system. Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, are there any opposition or abstentions in the item?
I ask that we not, not have consent on 385 dash 25.
Okay, so 385 dash 25 removed from the consent agenda. Do we need a formal action to pull 386? We need a motion for that?
As this, as this is the executive session meeting, we do not need to pull that formally. We would have to do that during the regular meeting, not the agenda fixing session.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and so regarding the items that we have here, pulling 385 from the consent agenda, do we otherwise have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that shall be noted. Okay, we now move on to ordinances on first reading. Would the business administrator please present the ordinances?
Yes, thank you Council President. We have seven ordinances on for first reading this evening. The first one is an amendment to our property maintenance code, and this will put it in line with state statute and the state code to mimic their due process language. The second ordinance that we have is an ordinance to create a permit process for Airbnbs in Plainfield, and this would be done through our property maintenance division. The third ordinance that we have this evening is adopting the 437 dash 457 West Front Street redevelopment plan. This is a commercial laundromat and a maximum of 20 apartments. The next ordinance is a tax exemption with respect to 314 to 322 East Fourth Street and their financial agreement with 314 East Fourth Street Development Urban Renewal LLC. This is a 30-year pilot, and right now, on that property, we would get $108,000 over the course of 30 years in tax revenue. And if this is adopted, that $108,000 would turn into approximately $8.8 million over the 30 years. So it'd be significant increase in revenue for the city taxes. It's a 68-unit building, 10% affordable, and the pilot escalates over the course of it. The next ordinance is an amendment to the financial agreement with North Ave Warehouse Urban Renewal LLC. This is a switch from how you're going to, how the financial agreement is calculated. So when you previously had it in front of you, the financial agreement was being calculated from considering it a warehouse, and since it's going to be more recreation, this amendment would switch it to being calculated by recreation. So it's the difference of calculating it from square footage to revenue. So now it would be revenues just like the one, the one prior, which is revenue-based. The next one is a first amendment to, another amendment to a financial agreement with SRV Plainfield Three Urban Renewal LLC. And this one is similar to the Resolution 389 dash 25 for City Village. This is required by their bank, by their financial institution. It's just additional timeline language about their refinancing and what would happen if they default. So it's, it's just required for their bank. And finally, we have an ordinance to adopt the Myrtle Ave redevelopment plan amendment. And we discussed a little bit about this in our special meeting, that the Neighborhood Health Center potentially could put up for sale property that they own, and this would allow them to subdivide their current property and add uses to what can be built there. And the uses would be civic property, telecommunications, light industrial, commercial, mixed use. So this would allow them the opportunity to subdivide and potentially sell that land. And that's, that's the ordinances we have this evening.
Okay, any questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Bridget Jones?
25, 41. You said 20 apartments is going there, how many spaces for parking?
That's not being presented. You're being presented with the redevelopment plan yet. You haven't been presented with the redevelopment agreement that'll have the full project description.
Okay. So it's mainly just an introduction?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those items shall be added to the voting meeting. Okay, we will recess for five minutes as we get together for our voting meeting. Okay, we will recess for five minutes as we get together for our voting meeting. Okay, we will proceed to our business.
Recording in progress.
And we'll move on now to ordinance on second reading and final passage. Madam Deputy, please read Bond 1285 by title and certify its legal compliance.
Bond 1285, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements for the sewer utility of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, State of New Jersey, appropriating 615,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of 585,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on September 9, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak regarding Bond 1285. Is there anyone online? Seeing no one in the gallery, I'll make a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Second.
Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessions?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That's unanimous, this bond ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, Clerk. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please read Bond 1286 by title?
Bond 1286, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements for the solid waste utility of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, State of New Jersey, appropriating 1,035,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of 985,500 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on September 9, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open for any member of the public who would like to speak regarding Bond 1286. Seeing no one online, no one in the gallery, entertain a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing on this ordinance is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved.
Clerk, can we have a second?
Second.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessions?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That's unanimous, this bond ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, Madam Deputy Clerk, please read Bond 1287 and certify its legal compliance.
Bond 1287, a bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements by and for the parking utility of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, State of New Jersey, appropriating 325,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of 325,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on September 9, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak regarding Bond 1287. Anyone online? Okay, not seeing none in the gallery, entertain a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call Bond 1287, councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessions?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
This bond ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, Madam Deputy Clerk, please read Bond 1288 by title and certify its legal compliance.
Bond 1288, a bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements by and in the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, State of New Jersey, appropriating 6,760,200 therefore and authorizing the issuance of 6,24,177 in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on September 9, 2025.
Floor is now open to any member of the public who'd like to speak regarding Bond 1288. Anyone online? Put your hands up. Okay, seeing none in the gallery, entertain a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, well, let's have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, roll call?
Roll call Bond Ordinance 1288, councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessions?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
This bond ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-34 and certify its compliance with the statutory publication requirements.
MC 2025-34 is an amendment to ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, amending Chapter 16, the Vehicles and Traffic Ordinance, Article 4, Section 16, Colon 4-5, Schedule 4, Parking Time Limits on Certain Streets and Areas. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on September 9, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who'd like to speak regarding MC 2025-34. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay. It's, public hearing is now closed, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Roll call ordinance 2025-34, councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessions?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-35 by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-35 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, granting a tax exemption with respect to certain property identified as Block 723, Lot 13.01, 1092-1098 Arlington Avenue, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 1092-1098 Arlington Urban Renewal LLC in connection therewith. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on September 9, 2025.
Floor is now open to any member of the public who'd like to speak regarding MC 2025-35. Hearing and seeing none, I'll take a motion and a second to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call MC 2025-35, councilmembers Briggs Jones?
No.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
No.
Vice President Sessions?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
If I am in favor to oppose, ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-36 by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-36 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 306 Wachong Urban Renewal LLC for certain improvements in the TODD South redevelopment area. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on September 9, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who'd like to speak regarding this ordinance. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion and a second to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call MC 2025-36, councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
No.
Vice President Sessions?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, MC 2025-36 has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay. Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-37 by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-37 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, authorizing a first amendment to financial agreement in connection with property identified as Block 218, Lots 23, 25 Clinton Avenue, Lot 24, 21 Clinton Avenue, and Lot 27, 1314-20 West Front Street. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on September 9, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who'd like to speak regarding this ordinance. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion and a second to close public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call MC 2025-37, councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessions?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted unanimously on second reading and final passage.
Okay, we now move on to public comments limited to resolutions and motions being considered this evening. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comments for the same. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Give your name, the city that you're from, and the resolution or motion that you are speaking regarding. The floor is open.
Nancy Pivuar, Plainfield. On R. 375-25, I think this is a great resolution. I give Mr. Abney a lot of credit to try to get this grant. I've worked with some students at NJIT and a professor there about the, about the boundaries for the militia posts, and I know how much their equipment, their equipment is amazing. Their cooperation is amazing, and it's way over my pay grade, and they know what they're doing, and I really appreciate the fact that Mr. Abney went out to try to get this. And also, I think some of the statistics and information that they developed can probably be used by the US Army Corps of Engineers, who's trying to develop that Greenbrook Upper Basin study. So I hope that, that that information will then be passed on to the Army Corps of Engineers, and if you need the connections, I can give you the emails to those people. The other one I want to talk about is 387, 388, cannabis. Just to make you aware, I've gotten a couple of phone calls, and I live in that neighborhood, and I actually can smell the cannabis. And other people can smell it also. We were assured at the time when Glade Nine went in that we would not be able to smell it, but within the past couple of weeks, we can smell marijuana. And just so you know, there's schools nearby, and it's a real concern to the neighborhood, and it's a concern of mine, that if I go in my backyard, I can smell it. When you drive through Clinton Avenue, you can smell it. And, you know, we don't know who we're supposed to turn to to get that corrected, but they need to fix it. Thank you.
Is there anyone online?
Not with their hand raised.
Okay. Name, city, and the resolution you're speaking regarding.
Anonymous. I'll be speaking on the resolution for the cannabis as well. I just wanted to state, in my personal opinion, I think the smell of cannabis is good. Cannabis is used by a lot of medical patients, and regardless of whether this is recreational or adult use, children, parents, teachers, all sorts of professionals, and many people from the public use cannabis medically. And recreational dispensaries provide access to people who use it medically, who don't have to go through the steps and the process of getting a card from the state and everything like that. The smell of burnt cannabis, or the smell of raw cannabis, does not disgust me. And I'm happy that you guys are considering this, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Rosario, Plainfield. I'm speaking on the cannabis hall, so I live in that neighborhood, and I can smell it very strongly, and I am not a consumer of it. It affects me personally, and I don't like it, I would like something to be... I would like something to be done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone online?
Not with their hand raised, no.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion and a second to close public comments on resolutions and motions being considered this evening.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay. Public hearing is now closed and will now move to the consent agenda. Clerk, can you announce the consent agenda?
Sure. Those items are three sixty through three eighty-four and resolutions three eighty-seven through three eighty-nine. On non-consent is resolution three eighty-five twenty-five, and removed from the agenda was resolution three eighty-six twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, clerk, can we have a roll call on the consent agenda?
Roll call on the consent agenda items, council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous, the consent agenda items have been approved, we now move to resolution three eighty-five twenty-five.
Okay, can we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, resolution three eighty-five twenty-five, council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
No.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, resolution's been adopted.
Okay, uh, we now move to items, ordinances on first reading. Madam Deputy?
MC twenty-two-five thirty-nine is an ordinance amending Chapter six, Section two of the Municipal Code, Property Maintenance Code, approving the adoption of a revised property maintenance code.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call, resolution MC twenty-two-five thirty-nine, council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, uh, Madam Deputy, please read the MC twenty-two-five dash forty by title.
MC twenty-two-five forty is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield in the County of Union, adopting regulations governing short-term rentals by the addition of Article nine to Chapter seventeen, Land Use Ordinance, to be codified as Section seventeen, colon, nine dash forty-nine E through seventeen, colon, nine dash forty-nine E point eight.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call, MC twenty-two-five forty, council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
No.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read MC twenty-two-five dash forty-one.
MC twenty-two-five forty-one is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting the four thirty-seven dash four fifty-seven West Front Street Redevelopment Plan dated October second, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call, MC twenty-two-five forty-one, council members Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed, ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, uh...
MC twenty-two-five forty-two is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, granting a tax exemption with respect to certain property identified as Block six zero six, Lot three, three fourteen dash three twenty-two East Fourth Street, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with three fourteen East Fourth Street Development Urban Renewal LLC in connection therewith.
Okay, I entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC twenty-two-five forty-two, council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, MC twenty-two-five dash forty-three, please.
MC twenty-two-five forty-three is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, authorizing a First Amendment to the Financial Agreement with North Ave Warehouse OZ Urban Renewal LLC with respect to certain property identified as Block three forty-one, Lot two, three thirty-six dash three forty-six Johnston Avenue, and Block three forty-four, Lot three, seven sixty-eight dash nine hundred North Avenue.
I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt this on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC twenty-two-five forty-three, council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been introduced on first reading.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read MC twenty-two-five dash forty-four.
MC twenty-two-five forty-four is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, authorizing a First Amendment to the Financial Agreement with SRV Plainfield Three Urban Renewal LLC with respect to certain property identified as Block three zero seven, Lots twenty point zero one, twenty-nine point zero one, thirty-one, zero one, thirty-five, and thirty-six, and designated in the city's tax records as four twelve dash sixteen East Second Street, two eighteen dash twenty-six Richmond Street, three forty-seven dash four twenty-three East Third Street, three forty-three dash forty-five East Third Street, and three thirty-nine dash forty-one East Third Street.
I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt this on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call, MC twenty-two-five forty-four, council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
This ordinance has been introduced on first reading.
Okay, Madam Clerk, MC twenty-two-five dash forty-five.
MC twenty-two-five dash forty-five is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting the Myrtle Avenue Redevelopment Plan Amendment dated October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call, MC twenty-two-five forty-five, moved by Councilman McCray, seconded by Councilman Vice President Sessoms, council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been introduced on first reading, and that concludes ordinances on first reading for this evening.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now move to public comments. Total of thirty minutes has been allocated for all public comments of any nature at all. Um, if anyone is online, uh, the number is conspicuously placed there. Uh, give your name, city that you, uh, live in, and the floor is yours to speak on any topic at all. Good afternoon.
Sean Huggins.
Or evening.
I need my address, too?
No, not necessary.
All right. Ah, the ice cream trucks, they park on the end of my street almost every day at a specific hour, and, uh, the, the horn they have in front of their truck, it takes you out of your bed. I went out there a few times, I'm trying to keep myself out of trouble to tell them I asked them kindly why they need to have it on blast at that volume, and it's every day until hours in the night. I've never seen an ice cream truck in Sleepy Hollow, so I don't know if it's a certain area that they target, but it's every single day, Monday to Sunday. Next thing, those little sports cars with the modified mufflers, I don't know who, uh, would be responsible or who I could ask about a speed bump on my street, because they seem to fly down there like we're on the freeway, and it's a short street, it only goes between second and third. So, who in here as part of this city?
So initially, I said, uh, you know, there's no legal requirement to announce your address, but because of the nature of your questions, we, we...
Okay.
At least need to know the block.
I'll tell you the street.
Yeah, yeah, the street.
Two-two-two Morris Street. It only goes between second and third, and they fly down there every single day. There's kids that live there, my dog plays outside sometimes, not that he should be. I've called the station before about the ice cream truck, too.
Okay.
That's it.
Well, uh, I want you to give your full comments, and then we'll respond afterwards.
Yeah, that's...
So as to not cut into your time.
Yeah, that's it, that's all I had to...
Okay.
I need to find out, like, what can we do about the ice cream truck?
All right, so at, at the conclusion of public comments, I'll have a mem, a member of the administration speak regarding those two issues specifically.
All right, thank you.
Nancy Pivuar, Plainfield. One of my friends once said, when does a promise become a lie? The mayor presents residents for advice and consent to the City Council for approval for the Planning Board and Zoning Board. People give their talent and take time away from their families to serve. They sit and they listen to testimony of applicants, developers, and expert witnesses. Applicants and licensed experts swear under oath as to what they are proposing, and after the hearing, a motion is passed and eventually memorialized. People are taken at their sworn words, and the honor principle is apparent. But what happens if what was testified takes a different turn, one, two, or three years later? Has the city ever prosecuted anyone for perjury or false swearing, and if so, what was the penalty, and if not, why not? Certainly, a complaint can be made to the proper city zoning officer or city official. Planning and zoning board members take people at their words, yet why is an applicant allowed to dishonor the board members, the system, the city, residents, and neighbors by not following the decision of the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Adjustment and what the applicant agreed to do? Thank you.
Name and city, floor is yours.
Hi, Larry Cohen, I live in, uh, Fanwood. Um, I was here last month, and I'm back to ask you once again to please consider following up on a resolution you yourselves passed earlier this year, um, about the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in pet stores. You passed a resolution in support of the state's effort to, to make this state law, and I came last month to ask you to pass your own ordinance to make your views about what the state should do apply to your own town. Um, I don't know if any of you saw this, and I know you can't see the, the wording here, but just two weeks ago, in all the media across the state, there was an announcement from the Attorney General's Office because eight pet stores that sell dogs had been fined for violating the Pet Purchase Protection Act. Um, that's almost half the stores in the state that actually sell puppies. And in fact, since two thousand and twenty-two, six of the other stores have also been fined, so that's fourteen. I have it confirmed from Consumer Affairs that two other stores are currently under investigation. So that's sixteen of the eighteen stores that sell dogs that have either been fined or are under investigation right now. This is not a lawful business model. Um, I would also like to, to just, um, let you know about something else that goes on that, that proves the, um, wisdom of what you did in January and what I hope you will do now. Every year, the Humane Society of the United States puts out a list called the Horrible Hundred. There are thousands of puppy breeders across the country, and what they do is they scour reports, mostly state reports, to come up with a, an, a representative list of a hundred of these breeders that are the worst, among the worst of the worst, so that they can tell the public exactly what these breeders do to dogs and unsuspecting consumers. So, it's not easy to get on that list, first of all. Second of all, the odds of a store actually using one of those breeders is very, very small. Well, these stores every year have to submit the lists of their breeders to their towns, and we go through those lists every year, and I can tell you that having gone through the lists of the stores that chose to submit their lists this year, there were thirty-four instances of those stores using breeders that are on, that have been on the Horrible Hundred at least one time. So not only is this an unlawful business model, it's a completely unethical business model. Dogs suffer tremendously, humans suffer when they end up with these dogs. Um, to help you perhaps understand this a little more, the stores themselves...
You can finish your sentence.
...admit that they only provide about five percent of puppies in the state of New Jersey. So, it's not an, this is not an issue of saying, well, where will people get their dogs? Um, I've brought the, the ordinance once more, I've emailed it to you, I had it last month, but I'd, I'd love to hand it out to you again. I'm, I'm so hoping you consider this, and in the alternative, if somebody could dialogue with me and let me know what your concerns might be, so that I could try and allay them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, I will be remaining anonymous. Um, I want to speak about, uh, some of the things that happened last time I was here. And the first thing I want to say is I encourage everybody that comes up to speak to ask for the three-minute clock to be shown. It's, uh, sad enough that you only get once a month here in Plainfield to speak for only three minutes, and we don't even have a clock facing the public, because transparency is a big part of government, um, and not even showing a clock is not a good start. Uh, when I came here for the last time, uh, you know, I don't like the security checkpoint, but you guys have it in place, that's fine, I feel like it's a Fourth Amendment violation, no big deal, is what it is. Uh, the officers who were manning the security checkpoint, they allowed city officials to go through, and, uh, through the Chair to Dave, you know, we know how we do it in Edison, you know, all, because otherwise, it's viewpoint discrimination. Here, granted special privileges for city elected officials and public officials, and and if it's for safety, it's kind of a liability issue if you're actually not treating everybody the same. So, last time, you know, I even started off my comments by thanking you all for the jobs that you do, and I do get a gauge of everybody, and I do think you're all good people, and you do want the best for your town. I even thanked the city clerk in my opening statements, just to find myself in a back-and-forth with the city clerk who decided to cut me off during my public statement. And the big problem is, is at the September 29th special meeting through the chair to Dave, there was no public portion comment for the public to speak on items not on the agenda. And I know you know this, and according to the OPMA, the revised statute 10:4-12 subsection A, every meeting, every meeting has to have a public portion set aside for items not on the agenda. And through the chair to the Public Information Officer, when you compelled me to look to see what the website stated for the last meeting, it didn't say anything about the executive session, but it did have public comments on it, it did have a public portion for the public to speak, which was then not on the paper agenda that I got the doorway. My first encounter with the officer over here to the right, he told me when I came in here, he engaged with me and told me I can't sit in the front row. I don't know why, nobody else sat in the front row for that whole meeting, so I just thought that was not a real warm welcoming. And then I was engaged by the other officer, who told me that he needed me at a volume 2, because I was speaking at a volume 4. Not really sure why I was given so much grief, I do have a camera, and I'm filming, and that shouldn't really raise any suspicions, you have a camera here, you have a camera here, and you have a camera here, but all of a sudden, a guy with a camera who comes into a city for the first time, you put yourself in my shoes, and you're being told you can't sit in the front row. You're being cut off during your three minutes, as I'm bringing up a point of how there was no public comment, so I was forced to speak on the resolution. And as far as I'm concerned, I should have another three minutes for the three minutes that was taken from the last meeting.
Council President, the speaker's time has elapsed.
Okay, thank you.
Can we at least acknowledge that there was supposed to be a public portion for every meeting? Through the chair to Dave, can we acknowledge that? Every meeting has to have a public portion, can we at least acknowledge that?
Council President, the speaker's time has elapsed.
You can have a seat.
Can we acknowledge that?
He can speak freely, but you can sit down as well. If you want to chime in on public, well, let us finish public comment, then we'll have all administration address any comments that were heard.
I'll be happy to, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Pamela Dunn. Couple of you know me. Okay, I'm here for safety. And I agree with the gentleman with the ice cream truck, if you can also go to the corner in front of Hubbard School on Spooner Avenue, and I do believe that is Love Bee. They are right dead on the corner. Every afternoon, when the children are coming out of school, it's not only blocking the corner, but now the kids see the ice cream truck, and shh, there they go. My other concern is when parents park in front of school, they sit in the car and they wave for the kids to come across the street, the kids dash across the street. Two kids have gotten hit already. I've had this concern for two years now. Something needs to be done. My other concern is the crossing guards. Okay, I don't know what kind of training they're getting or not getting, or they're not paying attention to a video, or whatever the case may be, but I'm telling you now, two of them was going to be in the hospital before they ended the school year because they're not doing what they should be doing. They seem to think that they're just going to stop, they're not stopping. The traffic on Plainfield and 8th is my concern, and the traffic on 7th and Spooner is my concern. These kids have to cross these two major streets to go to school. They're not stopping. I've sent emails, and I've also sent pictures of safety apparatus that could be used by the crossing guards, and it shouldn't cost that much. I mean, because the signs are already there, all you need is a solar panel, a amber strip, and a button. The amber strip will notify the traffic that somebody's about to step out in front of them instead of just, that's what they're doing, okay? That's my concern right now. And also with the loud muffler on the cars, and I don't know if you plan on increasing your inspection code enforcement group, but someone needs to reach out to these landlords because the overcrowding of these two-family homes, we're having more than 10, 15, 20 people in them, you got one driveway, and maybe 10 of them got a car. Now you're parking, you, going down 6th Street is like playing chicken with the driver coming the other way. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is anyone online?
Not with their hand raised.
Okay. Thanks for the nuance. Okay, I entertain a motion and a second to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. All right, there's some outstanding questions that give the administration an opportunity to respond to. We could start with the public requirement for public comments in special meetings.
Certainly, thank you, Council President. I have had an opportunity since the last meeting to confer with the clerk on this. And I think there's a piece of information that hasn't come to light, particularly in the public comments this evening, is that we are subject to a special charter. Plainfield is unique in that we are one of eight municipalities in the state that has a special charter. What does that mean? Our special charter is adopted by the state legislature, not only by the state legislature, but by two-thirds of the state legislators, legislature, a supermajority. So, what is the effect of that? The effect is that our charter trumps any state law to the contrary. And in our charter specifically, it states that the council has the right to make, to adopt its own procedures with regard to public meetings. Now, by and large, we follow the Open Public Meetings Act, and I believe on the evening, on the last special meeting, we did follow the Open Public Meetings Act because there was a public comment section. But whether or not it's a general public comment section or specific to the resolution that was voted on, that is up to this governing body, and by adopting, by having an agenda that had just one public comment, you were in compliance with the special charter. So I think that individuals who only look at the Open Public Meetings Act would be missing this very important law as it applies to Plainfield. Hopefully, that answers your question, thank you.
Thank you, so we.
Sir, sir. Watch him out.
You ready for me? Yeah, yeah, we, you want to go on?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, go right. Let's talk about everything else. Ice cream trucks, sir, what time do they come to your neighborhood, what time does that happen?
Right after school, I say about, I get home for about 3:20. And it's, I have files online.
Okay.
Hearing them from my office.
So they're just sitting there for an indeterminate amount of time?
Right, and the problem is, it's not that they just come down the street with the horn, they sit there with the horn on blast.
Okay, I'll address that. I'll have my officers looking into that starting tomorrow. If there's a problem there, we'll write a loud, a loud music or a loud ordinance ticket, we'll take care of that.
I called just to find out, like, you know, is there something in place for, like, a noise ordinance?
There, there.
Turn it down, people went out there already, and ask them to turn it down, sorry, Tom.
There is, and we'll address that for you, I'm sorry that it happened like that way, but we'll take care of that. In terms of loud mufflers and things on vehicles, we can only catch people when that occurs, so you understand how that works. If they're driving down the street, by the time you pick up the phone and call the police department, they're already going out of the area. There was a project that, is a pet project that I'm trying to work on with the State Assembly in regards to something that New York City has, which is sound cameras, but that hasn't gotten any traction yet, but we're going to keep working on that, that should help that. In regards to children crossing the streets, we have several things that's going on there, 7th and Spooner is a county roadway. So we're working with the county government and trying to address that and put those those yellow neon signs with the two persons on it to try to get people to slow down. Also, at 7th and Spooner, as like, as like Plainfield and 8th, there are two crossing guards at both of those locations. If there's an issue regarding their training, we will make sure that we will have that monitored. Every crossing guard receives training through the Plainfield Police Department. That has occurred for the last 30 years, it hasn't changed anything recently. As a matter of fact, we probably provide more training than most municipalities in this area. Kids being hit and ice cream trucks at Hubbard School, we will work with the school security and also with their, with their administration, the principal, and address what's going on with these ice cream trucks hanging around schools after school lets out. That shouldn't be occurring, it's just, it's just creating a public nuisance, in my opinion. And if that's going on while we're out there, I actually have a cop that is assigned to Hubbard School every day. He will go out there and he will address that, so that should take care of that problem. I think that's everything that I have, I don't have anything else. Is there anything else from anybody? The speed bumps we'll take care of, but we'll discuss the rest of that after the meeting. Thank you. Okay. Okay, I think all addressed, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
The Council President?
Yes.
Sorry, real quick, before we adjourn, can we just have a moment of silence for Lois Mattson, the former.
Absolutely.
Councilman's wife, please.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, rest in peace, Ms. Mattson. Meeting adjourned.